Spalding County Board of Commissioners, five May regular session. I would ask that you please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I would ask Commissioner Gwen Flowers-Taylor to deliver the invocation, and Commissioner Watts to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
If you would, join me in a moment of silence before I pray. Father God, we just come to you this evening in thanksgiving for all that you've given us today. We thank you for fresh air to breathe, good food to eat, clean, safe places to live, and we thank you for the gift of the earth that you've given us. We ask you to be in this room with those who've made it to this meeting tonight and those who didn't. We ask you to see us safely home after this meeting. But most of all, we ask you to come into this room and offer us patience, discernment, and understanding to make the best decisions for the majority of Spalding County and for the best for the citizenry of this county. We ask you to be with our first responders, the 911 callers, the EMS, the fire, the sheriff's department, animal control, everyone who is that first person that meets you on the street that represents Spalding County. We ask you to give them the courage to do the work that you've assigned to them and the ability to show that as a county, we love our community. All of these things, Lord, we ask in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Follow me into the pledge of the flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wendy, have an amendment?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to remove item number... Storm, is it Stormwater?
Just a second.
Item number...
No.
Item number eight, consider approval of purchase of firefighter turnout gear. Remove that from the agenda. Item is not qualified as an item that we can address.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Motion has been agenda, uh, motion has been amended. I will entertain a motion to enter public hearing for fiscal year 2026 expenditure budget. Do I have a motion?
Some.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, motion carries. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names and addresses. Speakers must direct your comments to the board and not to individual commissioners or the audience. Personal disagreements with individual commissioners or county employees are not a matter of public concern and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the commissioners during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speakers will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend this rule. At this time, county manager, do we have people who have signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, we do. We have one person signed up for this evening for the budget public hearing, Mr. Joe Skinner. If you would step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joe Skinner. I'm here representing Nalo Spalding, and we are at 222 Meriwether Street, Griffin, Georgia.
Welcome. Please go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to introduce myself. Like I said, I'm Joe Skinner. I'm the executive director. We're a local nonprofit who, we're an addiction recovery support center. And we are here to support programs that exist to uplift the recovery community and also fill in any gaps where we see fit. I want to thank you all for supporting recovery in our community. I myself am a person living in long-term recovery, and what that means for me is that I'm an asset to my community. I'm a full-time father. I have a fulfilling career. And I'm able to help other people know that recovery is not only real, but it is the expectation. When you reach out for help, that's what we're going to do. We're going to reach back and be there for you. I don't have a whole lot to say tonight, but hopefully you guys will be seeing more of me. And I'm just glad to be here and want to be a resource and help in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May God continue to bless you.
Mr. Chair, that's all who have signed up this evening.
At this time, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, motion to close. Now, I would like to ask the county manager to make his presentation on the fiscal year 2026 budget. As Dr. Ledbetter is getting set up, I'd like to just mention, not to take anything, use any of his lines, but how this works so everybody understands is two parts. In January, the Board of Commissioners came together and passed out to Dr. Ledbetter our guidance to him, and he worked from then until now to be able to put together our budget. This is, comes in two parts. We have a budget now and we'll have revenue later on. The budget books, I'm surprised we don't have them in front of us, are two books like this, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages to be able to do it. So, wanted you to understand how we got to where we are. It is Dr. Ledbetter's job to put together the budget and bring it back to the commissioners to be able to vote on it in our first reading tonight. Dr. Ledbetter, sorry if I took something away from your presentation.
No, sir, it's perfectly fine. Thank you very much. Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to stand before you and share with you our prepared budget for fiscal year 26. It's my privilege to share with you how we're moving our community forward. As the screen indicates, we had a plan. And for those of us who have been in the military, we know that all good plans work until the first bullet arrives, and then all plans go very much awry. And unfortunately, that's, that's kind of where we feel like as a staff has happened to us with respect to what happened during this latest legislative session. House Bill 92 was introduced, and it had some changes that required us to expedite our plan, and that's why you see the scratch marks on two, for the dates. Let's see if we can make this work. There we go. So, to ensure compliance with House Bill 92, our fiscal '26 budget presentation required us to make some changes to the, to the dates. So, our first reading is tonight, May the 5th, and our second reading will be May the 19th. They were scheduled for June, but in accordance with House Bill 92, we had to move those dates forward. Thank you, Erica, for bringing the books out. As you can see, these are the budget books for fiscal year 26 that we have listed, all of the departments and every line item that we went through over the course of a full week that the board sat through, and we're very much appreciative that, that you took the time to do that. Tonight, we are in the budget hearings and adoption for the fiscal year 26 expenditure budget for our first reading. So, this is our budget. So, the information that you see on the screen is aggregated for our departments, indicates that we have roughly a $2 million increase for fiscal year '25 to '26, and each of the line items are listed there for you to see, highlighted from the largest expenditure to the smallest expenditure. You can see that we spend a considerable amount of money on law enforcement in our community at 35%, and then it rolls down from there. But I want to get a little bit deeper with us for our discussion this evening. So, I'm going to show you each one of the line items and share with our community how we are allocating those funds by department. I also want to highlight the fact that state, oh, sorry, that House Bill 92 requires that we certify our rollback rate, our estimated rollback rate for this year. The tax assessor's office and our administrative staff remain in constant contact over the last few months, and will continue to do so until we set the millage rate because we are paying very close attention to the valuations for our homes and our businesses across our community. One of the things that I do want to highlight is that as we have been examining the data that's come through the office, we are seeing about a 2.1% increase in our home valuations. And that's important, and I'm going to show you why in just a second. It is on our five-year tax levy history. So, at the bottom of our five-year tax levy history, it indicates for fiscal year '26, calendar year '25, that there's a 4.74% increase. That's not what we see on our individual bills. Will some see that? Yes. Others will see much less. But on average, we are seeing a 2.1% increase for our home valuations, and the difference between that 4.74 and the 2.1 is the growth that we've seen in our community. So, through community development, we have seen a little over 500 permits this year, but I'll give you some examples. So, just inside of Sun City Peachtree, they are building approximately 100 homes a year. So, those 100 homes add to the digest for residential properties across our community. Well, that increase is a part of the gross digest, which then figures into that total tax amount that you see at the bottom of this screen. So, there's, the gross millage rate, if you'll look on the screen, indicates that year over year, we've seen a decrease in our taxes for the past six years. So, does that mean that this estimate is the final? No, I'm going to tell you flat out that your staff is working diligently hard to reduce our millage rate between now and the time that we present it for your consideration. But this is what we're seeing, the four, 15.45 mills at the net digest rate is what we're seeing right now is the requirement for managing the budget moving forward with the expenditures that we're going to present this evening. So, if you look at the screen, the difference between the millage rate estimated for our rollback this year and our expenditure budget, we have a zero differential. So, what that means for us is we've got to balance the budget. So, I am proud to present our balanced budget to you, but one of the things I do want to highlight is that we are running a, an extremely lean, balanced budget. And when I say lean, I mean extremely lean. Our local option sales tax is coming in at about a 3.1% increase over last year, and we did not allocate that increase for, for the budget. We are placing that information into our general fund, fund balance account, but that's only $264,064.07 of expected overage. So, if we have an emergency that is above that 264, we will come back before you and ask for permission to take those funds out of the fund balance moving forward for any emergencies. So, we are running an extremely lean budget. So, what does that mean for homesteaded properties? So, I did want to highlight the fact that we opted out of House Bill 581, which means that we continue to increase based on the valuations of the homes, but that doesn't mean that we were going to have a tax relief. That was not what the, what the legislation was for. That was not what the referendum was for. We did not vote for a tax relief. We voted for, specifically for the valuations of our homes to be frozen moving forward. It, it still would have required us to go up in our millage rate to make up for the difference between the revenues and the expenditures to account for a balanced budget. But if you look at the bottom left-hand side of the slide, for fiscal, or sorry, for calendar year '25, all of our research is indicating that the average valued home was reduced this past year at about $3,000, thereabout. But $3,000 in valuation really does not have a significant impact on taxing at our millage rate for revenue coming in. That said, I do want to highlight the fact that we are seeing about a $19 savings last year to this year for the taxes that are going to be paid for the average valued home inside of Spalding County. The top graph, or sorry, the top table shows homesteaded property fiscal year '26, and the middle table indicates last year's homesteaded property 2025. And you can see the differences in the total amount of taxes, not only for county M and O, but also for school district and our fire district tax. I do want to call your attention to something specific on this page. Notice the fire district tax and the difference in millage rate from last year to this year. There is a .2 mil increase in the fire district tax for unincorporated Spalding County. Why? The reason for that increase is to afford our fire department the opportunity to place that third person at each station, each shift, to manage the, the growth that we have coming into our community. I'm very pleased to tell you that even with that .2 mil increase, there is still a reduction of $19 to the averaged valued home inside of Spalding County. What does that mean? It means we continue to lower our taxes for our community at a managed rate to ensure that we've got the right funding at the right time for the right reason, the services that we provide for our community. So, let me go through and highlight some of those major changes that we're seeing. So, overall, we have a 2.5% increase for all of our employees, and we're listing this as a cost of living increase. How did we get to the 2.5? Well, the 2.5% increase is the exact same amount that the veterans are receiving this year, began in 2025, as an increase to their, both their retirement and to their disability income. Two and a half percent. 3.41% was what social security received. So, we are not hitting at the high. We're not giving nothing, but we are hitting right in the middle, the same thing that our veterans are getting for the cost of living increase for our, for our employees. We, staff feels like this is a good place for us to be. It keeps us squarely in the middle of the pay for the study that we did last year. So, we're very confident that this is a good place for, for the raises for our employees. It, if you look at the administration side, the Board of Commissioners, two meetings ago, did approve for the addition of the records retention administrator. That figure is included in this, this budget. If you look at the information systems, you'll notice a significant increase here, but that is for payment of all of Tyler Technologies' software for the entire county. It is housed in IT, but it manages all of our financial, all of our HR software across the county. This is the place, we feel like it's the best for this year for our budget because it affords us the opportunity to pay very close attention to how this, how these funds need to be allocated in future budgets. It affords us the opportunity, under the general appropriations section, for a $500,000 investment into sewer. If you remember, this board also approved us to go and take a look at that, that amount of funding for investment in sewer. We have done that, and we have listed it in this year's budget. One of the things that I do want to highlight is an unfunded mandate. So, the state of Georgia, through their legislative session this year, has required that Spalding County, as a result of the number of cases that are currently working their way through the state court, we are in a position where we should have three, according to Judge Thacker, three state court judges, but he is only asking for two. So, this will be an added one, added one judge, Judge Thacker plus one, judge for our state court. This is an unfunded mandate, and the $970,000 that you see listed on the screen is only enough money to fund one half of the year. So, the judge will, is expected to be in January 1st of 2026 through July, sorry, June the 30th of 2026. To operate a second state court, it will require approximately $2 million per year to operate that, that court. That's a lot of money that's unfunded. So, we had to find locations within our current budget to reduce in order to satisfy this unfunded mandate, and I will go through those in just a second. One of, one of the other things that, that we discussed during our budget meeting was, as a result of the growth, not only did our fire department need additional personnel to support that growth, but our sheriff's department did as well. Your budget that's sitting in front of you indicates five additional deputies as a part of that increase for this fiscal year.
So, that's, that's nearly, all totaled with the sheriff's department, that's nearly a $2 million increase. That's great. That's great that our budget can do that. That's awesome.
One of the things that we had to carefully consider was the reduction of unfilled positions at our correctional institute. So, there were eight COs that are currently not filled, and those positions will not be filled moving forward into fiscal year '26. It's also a reduction of our inmates from 225 to 100 inmates. For Senate's enforcement, again, you heard during our last Board of Commissioner meeting, the discussion by Judge Thacker and our Senate's enforcement director, how they, the state law has changed the number of probationers that they can oversee. This has created some financial challenges for our community, and we are currently funding that position, or those positions, out of our general fund at a cost of about, a little over $100,000 in addition to what we were last year, that we do not get reimbursed for. We are working with our state legislators and our Senate's enforcement, along with Judge Thacker, to understand how we can recover those funds moving into next year, but those, those calculations had to be considered. For our coroner, our community is growing, and sadly, what that means for us is we are experiencing some of our neighbors leaving us prematurely, of course, and that has created some challenges for our coroner's office because they are now asking for additional supplies to meet the demands that, that they're required to meet. For our 911, you will notice that there is about a $52,000 decrease in the maintenance program. When we upgraded all of the radio systems for our 911, the maintenance cost was reduced because we have a newer program, a newer setup, and the maintenance went down. The bad news is, this latest legislative session took into account NextGen 911, which will require our system to go through a, a major upgrade for the software to accommodate for individuals who not only call 911, but who text and video chat all of our dispatchers. And that will require some significant changes, not only to the, the consoles with the software that we're running, but also with the way that we are receiving phone calls. Currently, AT&amp;T has copper wiring that run into our 911 center, and all of that copper wiring will be removed and replaced with fiber, which will link our center to all of the other centers across Georgia. So, if we do have a major incident like we did a few years ago when the five tornadoes came through, the rollovers are much easier to accommodate, and it, it affords us the opportunity to support and help our joining counties like we have here in the last few years when Fayette County's system was struck by lightning, and we were able to pick up their calls. It won't overburden our system. So, there, there's a lot of changes that are going on. This increase to the software, increase to the way that we manage the system. I, I, I would love to be able to stand here and tell you that it's going to be X amount of dollars, but right now, we don't know. We're getting information that it could cost between $75,000 or a million, and that is a huge divergence in numbers. So, we will bring much of that information to you as quickly as we possibly can as we learn what's going on with the NextGen 911. There's another consideration that we learned over the past week that the state is really pushing for regionalization of the 911 system. So, there's a lot that's going to go on in this department that could, could make even more interesting discussions moving forward. There is $1 million left in public works to offset challenges with our roads, such as potholes or side buildups. I, I know we've received phone calls from, from many of our neighbors in the last few days because the weather has changed. It's a little wetter. It's raining a lot more. We're seeing a lot more potholes as the weather starts to warm up and the asphalt starts to crack. So, that $1 million is still in play. The easement crew, we're only funding this department at a minimum staffing level for fiscal year '26. There are some other things on the agenda this evening that are, are listed in this line item as well, which is Phase One of our Stormwater Utility Master Plan. You'll hear a little bit more about that in just a few minutes, but those figures are added in here as well. One of the changes that we're having to make to offset the, the requirements for the second court is the reduction of the number of recycle centers that we have across our community. One of the, the things that you see here on the screen, we're, we're making a recommendation that we move down to two centers, which would be Carver and Woodruff. And of those two centers, you will see that we've got about a $330,000 reduction to offset the, the requirements for the other line items. Hand lighter, there is a cost for utilities for a hand lighter as we finalize the construction of that facility to get it turned over. We're estimating that those utilities will cost us about $13,000. The aquatic center, I am happy to report that revenue at the gate has netted us about $325,000, which offset our budget for this year. If you've not been out to the aquatic center in the early afternoons or, or early evenings, I would encourage you to go because even Sunday evening, I checked Sunday night, there were about 50 or 60 young people swimming at the center. And out of that, that's offsetting at the gate about $330,000, or sorry, $325,000 for, for our budget. Code enforcement, this is an increase of one code enforcement officer. So, one of the code enforcement officers that is working now is only part-time. She's part-time as a code enforcement officer, part-time as administration. The recommendation of staff is to move her to a full-time code enforcement officer and bring in an administrative assistant. uh, to answer the phones and take care of the paperwork. That puts one additional code enforcement officer on the road, uh, in support of cleaning up our community. Sunnyside, you will notice that there's about a 95, $94,000 a year reduction for, uh, for managing, um, the Sunnyside facility. Uh, the money that you see there is solely for, uh, the utilities. The rental of that facility is taking care of all of the other needs. Uh, also as an aside, the walking trail, uh, the, the work will begin here in the next few weeks to install the walking trail around this facility, but it's not coming out of general fund, it's coming out of impact fees. Overall, the increase for our general fund is 2.77%. Uh, that is well in line with the direction that the board provided staff. Uh, and that is our recommendation this evening is that you make an approval of the fiscal year 26 budget at 75,634,450 or a $2,35,785 increase over last year. Uh, at this time, I'll be more than happy to entertain any questions.
I was planning on asking questions when we get ready to vote, but not now. Okay, all right, thank you, Dr. Ledbetter. At this time, I would ask that, uh, Chief Mike Burke to step to the forward and recognize, uh, Captain Randy Ponder for 20 years of dedicated service to the Spalding County Fire Department.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Uh, this is one of those fun moments we get to come before you and, uh, recognize one of our great team workers. Uh, and the, this one's really funny to, to recommend or actually present this award to, and I'm going to tell you why. Captain Ponder, if you please step forward. So Captain Ponder actually started our department in 2006, um, quickly moved up lieutenant in 2012 and became captain in 2022, but he's one of these that's very quiet. He comes to work every day, doesn't make a big fuss, does his job, does it very well, then fades off into darkness afterwards. And if you may recall, I presented, had the honor of presenting him a le- a letter because he was one of the ones that set us up for success the day that we had the house fire right beside Station 4 by being a very young captain who recognized a hole in the service and quickly fixed it. And as a result, there was an engine in that station when the fire came in. So he is one of those and that he embarrassed, he gets embarrassed that I bring that up, that's why I'm not looking at him because he's shooting daggers in the back of my head right now for saying this. Uh, he is one of those that is just very strong, very solid, but doesn't like recognition. So it is actually my pleasure to embarrass him with 20 years of service and I want to tell him how much we appreciate him as a citizen of Spalding County, how much I appreciate the leadership he has provided for 20 years.
What a nice word, chief. Uh, it's been an honor to serve the community, uh, a pleasure to go out and be able to interact with the citizens from all different walks of life in our community. And, uh, I don't know about 20 more, but maybe 10 more. Thank you.
Commissioners, I would like to take this opportunity and recognize, uh, Commission Chair Clay Davis for successfully, successfully completing the ACCG Citizen Engagement Track Certification. Uh, this prestigious certification awarded by the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia highlights, uh, Commissioner Davis's commitment to fostering active public involvement and enhancing communication, customer service, and accessibility within our community. Through the completion of eight specialized courses, Chairman Davis has demonstrated exceptional dedication to understanding and implementing strategies that motivate citizens to engage with their county government. This achievement not only reflects his personal commitment to professional development, but also underscores his dedication to serving the residents of Spalding County. Uh, at this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Clay Davis.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, let's see here now. Next on the agenda is a proclamation for, to declare May as the Mental Health Awareness Month in Spalding County. I would ask that, uh, Commissioner Dutton, please read the proclamation.
Proclamation, Spalding County, Georgia, Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas, mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. It affects how we think, feel, and act. It also affects how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. And whereas, mental health allows us to maintain relationships, take care of ourselves and our families, take care of our physical bodies, and respond and adapt to daily life changes. And whereas, mental health disorders commonly bring, begin during adolescence with a significant number of young people reporting having a serious mental health disorder at some point in their life. Suicide is one of the leading causes of death for individuals ages 10 to 34 in the United States. And whereas, a lack of mental health awareness leads to devastating impacts on the well-being of individuals and society. And whereas, evidence-based mental and behavioral health training teaches adults how to recognize signs and symptoms of mental health and substance use problems in youth and provides adults with skills to use a five-step action plan to help youth who may be facing a mental health problem or crisis such as suicide. And whereas, teen mental health first aid trainings are proven to reduce stigma and teach students to help their friends who may be facing a mental health problem or crisis such as suicide. And whereas, during Mental Health Awareness Month and throughout the year, Spalding County is committed to ending stigmas surrounding mental health and promoting solutions to the mental health struggles of its residents. Now therefore, we, the Spalding County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Spalding County, Georgia. In witness thereof, Chairman Clay Davis has hereunto set his hand and cause the seal of Spalding County to be affixed this 5th of May in the year of our Lord 2025, Spalding County Board of Commissioners.
Do I have, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve, do I have a second? All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify. Excuse me, is there a discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I am just, I'm very glad that we are recognizing that this month is Mental Health Awareness Month. But I'm also very disappointed that I, the county's attempt to help start, um, a mental health and addiction work group has sadly failed. That group initially met in October, had almost 40 people to attend, and there has been no action since then. We, we've talked on this desk multiple times about, uh, the effects of adverse childhood experiences that lead to addiction and other mental health problems. I just hope that, um, as a board, that we can go back and see can we kickstart this? Because if we as leaders in the community don't want to address the fact that we act as if mental health problems are taboo and not to be discussed, then we can't expect the rest of the community, um, to come on board. And whether people understand it or not, mental health affects your physical health. So if you go to the doctor for your blood pressure, you need to go to the other doctor for your crazy, because we all got some. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, motion carries. At this time, I would like to invite Warden Humphries to the podium for the proclamation recognition of May 4 through 11, um, 2025 as the National Correctional Officers Week in Spalding County.
Mr. Chairman, with your approval, I would like to read that proclamation.
You good with that, Mr.?
Yes, sir. Spalding County Board of Commissioners, proclamation, National Correctional Officers Week, May 4 through 10, 2025. Whereas correctional officers play a vital role in maintaining the safety and security of our correctional facilities, ensuring the well-being of inmates, staff, and the public. And whereas these dedicated professionals perform their duties with integrity, courage, and professionalism, often enter challenging and demanding conditions. And whereas correctional officers contribute significantly to the rehabilitation and reintegration of inmates, fostering a safer and more just society. And whereas the Spalding County Board of Commissioners recognizes the invaluable service and commitment of correctional officers and the critical role they play in our criminal justice system. And whereas National Correctional Officers Week, established by President Ronald Reagan in 1984, is, is observed annually during the first full week of May to honor and celebrate the, uh, the contributions of correctional officers nationwide. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Spalding County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim May 4 through 10, 2025 as National Correctional Officers Week in Spalding County, Georgia, and encourages all citizens to join in recognizing and expressing their gratitude for the dedication and service of our correctional officers. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and cause the seal of the county to be affixed this 5th day of May, 2025. Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Sure.
I have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Warden.
Yes, sir, if you don't mind, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I would like to, uh, just say a few words about, uh, the, the correctional officers we have in Spalding County. We work in an environment where very few people want to, uh, even visit, much less work. And, um, we work in a highly litigated, uh, environment. And thus, whether that's an inmate or inmate's family or the general public. And I can tell you that we have very little of any of that. Uh, in fact, I can't tell you the last time that we've had, uh, any litigation. I can't, uh, it's probably been a year since I've had a complaint from the general public. And the, the inmates, the environment that we've created for them, they're safe and, uh, and productive for this county. And that's due to the folks that's behind me. And I, I greatly appreciate, I've been in this business a long, long, long time and I've worked around many, many, many different teams. But, uh, this group takes pride in what they do. Um, they, under the limelight, um, that's a good thing in our, our, our world. But, uh, they're very dedicated to what they do and, and, uh, they don't get the recognition that they deserve and they, they truly, uh, are, are outstanding citizens and, you know, I seen Todd here a while ago and he's got all those little ones with him, five or six of them, however, seven, eight, nine, or 10, however many they are, um, to, to take time out of his family life to come up here and bring his kids up here just to, to get that recognition, that says a lot to us. So, uh, thank you very much for the recognition and, uh, we deeply appreciate it.
Let's, Warden, if you could get all your folk, people to come up, do you want us to stand behind?
Uh, yes, y'all will stand behind.
Dr. Burks? We're going to stand behind and feel, pull everybody.
Look, see, y'all know you're coming back here, you know. Those tall folks, we're always in the back. Can ever see my belt.
All right, if you can't see my face, we can't see you.
The warden, the warden has to be in the back.
Red speech to the outside, she needs a stool.
No, I, I can, what about this spot, can I see you? Where did she go? Oh, there she is. Can you see them?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Make that an empty spot, make that, y'all gotta move. Hollow that out. Now don't nobody move to that spot behind the warden now.
Or get in the picture all the way.
Thanks for coming on.
Thank y'all for anything you do. Come you right there.
Cause I'm here.
Right, we got, what time it started, at 6 o'clock? Maybe they recorded.
I'm sure they have.
Is she fine?
She's nine.
Get out of here.
Your daughter is nine.
Next is, uh, citizen comments, do we have any citizen comments, uh?
No, sir, we do not have anyone signed up for this, for this evening.
Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for both the special called meeting with the city of, city of Griffin and Orchard Hill on April 21st and the extraordinary meeting on April 24th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, motion carries unanimously. New business. We have an opportunity to discuss the matters, the, the matter, uh, during, uh, of, uh, employee health vision and dental benefits, uh, this afternoon. Uh, is the board ready- Uh, is the board ready to proceed with this contract? Do I have a motion to approve?
Uh, motion to approve the, before I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, can we get some clarification from the county manager? Are there any changes that we should be aware of from a meeting this afternoon?
So the, the information that the board requested was how could we continue to reduce the out-of-pocket, um, expense for our employees? Uh, and the staff would make a recommendation for the board's consideration to approve the contract for the twenty-six annual employee health vision and dental benefits, uh, at the current provider, Cigna and Veracity, with the increase, uh, of the maximum out-of-pocket, uh, to fifteen hundred dollars for our employees and the GLP-one medications, um, added benefit. Uh, and also afford staff to review the opportunity to use a HSA program to add an additional benefit, uh, to reduce out-of-pocket expenses for our employees.
So we don't have a final number on that, but you don't feel like it's going to change our budget?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Okay, in that case, I would like to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-six annual employee health vision and dental benefits through Veracity, um, Cigna, and through the M S I contract.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Uh, so everybody knows, we spoke about this at a workshop just before this. All right, all those in favor?
But we do have some ideas in addition to this. So this is just that segment and then we're gonna.
That's correct.
I just wanna make this.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Thank you. Consider approval of the first reading of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Is the Board of Commissioners prepared to vote? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve on first reading the fiscal year budget of twenty twenty-six.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. The, the, I have a number of things I'd like to say.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. We asked the, uh, county manager, uh, in January to do a number of things. Let's start with, uh, right after the November election, the folks in HB five eighty-one said sixty percent of the people said they wanted to, uh, have us opt-in to be able to do this. Uh, every person I talked to, every person I talked to said that they thought the, uh, five eighty-one, uh, vote that they made in November was to reduce taxes. Uh, that wasn't what it was for. But the motion was, uh, pretty loud and clear, at least to myself, that sixty percent of our citizens want tax reduction. So we talked hard to the county manager about when he set the budget up and brought it to us. We wanted to make sure we had a reduction in taxes. Not just a reduction in the millage rate. Millage rate's one thing, taxes is a different thing when you take it out of your wallet. As you saw tonight, the, uh, budget that we're getting ready to approve, uh, has a, uh, slight, but a tax reduction, uh, that we're starting to move on. If you go back and show, uh, one of his, um, uh, can you show your tax across the bottom sixteen, sixteen, sixteen one three eight? Just give me a second. I wanna make sure everybody can see it.
You're going in the wrong direction. There you go. Keep coming. Keep, it's a long way. Come on. Uh, one more, one more, right there.
All right, uh, uh, if you look at that net millage, net M and O millage rate, I wanna talk about it for a second. Right, Commissioner Bolden and I came on at the same time and, uh, Commissioner Dutton, uh, we said we were gonna walk in and at, um, twenty-one, we were going to reduce the taxes in our county. And we were gonna do that through using the millage rate to be able to do that. Uh, that year and the next year, uh, were both set up to do, um, ARPA, ARPA funds to accept the thirteen million dollars. It had on page six hundred and thirty-eight of the acceptance to the, that, that said, you can't use this to reduce taxes. So for those two years, when we accepted, uh, thirteen million dollars, we could not reduce taxes of the millage rate. As you notice, after that, uh, we've reduced the millage rate the next three years in a row to be able to do that. We heard what the citizens said when they voted in November and we're gonna make that a reality. I wanna talk for a second about the pay, uh, increase for our, uh, employees. Two years ago or so, we did a pay study. Uh, the pay study was, uh, issue was to take care of, uh, compression. We were hiring people and hiring people and pretty soon the person that was training them was making less money than the person who they were training. Uh, we took a, uh, three million dollar, uh, made a three million dollar decision and moved that money so that we had, uh, eliminate, uh, compression and had it to be, had it, uh, set up so that everybody got the pay that they should be getting. The impact that that had on our, uh, hiring and on people staying has been absolutely fantastic. When we started, before we took the pay study, we were having about a hundred people short. Uh, we're less than about thirty or forty right now, my wild guess, uh, people short and people wanting to come to us to be able to do it. So the two-point, uh, plus that, uh, we're able to do, we have got to continue to do to hire the kinds of people that we want to have in our county. Uh, we talked a lot about, uh, two parts of our budget, the budget and the revenue. Uh, we're taking an opportunity with, uh, five hundred thousand dollars in this, to provide for sewer. It is our first long-range plan to be able to get, um, a reduction, a further reduction in our, uh, tax base. To be able to do that, it, our tax base will go up, consequently, we will be able to reduce. As you, you should know by now, our, uh, rate payer, our, uh, homeowners are where almost all of our money comes from. We have very little industry, uh, manufacturing and commercial to be able to do this. With the, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, uh, we're hoping to start the process to be able to work, uh, with the water authority to be able to bring in, uh, manufacturing on, uh, A K B six, uh, Highway sixteen to be able to increase, uh, the amount of money we have coming from, uh, manufacturing, uh, and, uh, commercial and, uh, yes, all right. There are a number of unfunded mandates that come down to us. Uh, we don't have a say in them. The state says you're gonna do this and we just swallow and have to find money to be able to do it. It happens to us all the time. The latest one is just almost a million dollars this year. Uh, luckily for us, we were able to do it in January, which is half a year instead of a full year. But next year, it's gonna cost us, as you heard, uh, Dr. Ledbetter say, two million dollars. And we don't have any place that that money comes to us from except to take it away. At the same time, we're trying to reduce taxes. Here's an unfunded mandate from the state that says two more million dollars you're gonna pay. Now, yeah, is it needed? Now, there's no question in my mind. Uh, Judge Thacker does more cases, uh, than any, uh, state judge in our state. And he is six thousand cases behind. That means our citizens are waiting for years to be able to get an opportunity to go before a judge to get their case taken care of. Uh, last I'd like to talk about for a second about the, uh, uh, roads, the one million dollars. Uh, it used to be, five years ago, there were no money in our budget for roads. We took it all out of, uh, S P L O S funds. Uh, it was the number one issue that faced me when I took, when I came in. Uh, the commissioners agreed that we had to do something about it. We were able to pass a T S P L O S. T S P L O S, our money is basically used for resurfacing. But what about the potholes that come along and we need to take care of them? So we created a line item for a million dollars and have been able to keep that line item in our budget, uh, even with the other requirements that have gone on. Belt tightening is not easy. Everybody wants to talk about belt tightening. But when the time comes for belt tightening, everybody says, oh, not my area, not this area, not that area. I don't want that to happen. Belt tightening is tough and the county manager has showed us a way to be able to have a balanced budget and be able to do belt tightening at the same point. At this time, I'd like to stop. I have one more issue I'd like to talk about, but, uh, see if you all have something you would like to say? Commissioners?
No.
Okay.
Uh, just one thing about the firemen. I just want, if you can kinda mention about the fact that it is really important, um, that our budget increased for the firemen because we know that we need to have more than two firemen running a fire station.
Yeah, that, it, we have, we, right now at our face, fire stations, we have two, two people. When a, a fire happens and those two deploy, that's only two people going into a house fire to be able to do something. The play, the way we have it set up is a second truck comes after, uh, the first truck to be able to do that. If one person is sick, we have to close a fire station down. That's not acceptable to us. Our issue was be able to set that up without having a ta, overall tax increase. And the, once again, the great county manager was able to do that. Uh, anything else? Uh, my last issue is, um, a, a sticky issue that I wanna make sure everybody understands. The last time that, uh, the Board of Commissioners, uh, had a pay raise was in two thousand. That's not quite the way it's supposed to be, but everybody is afraid to touch that's, that, uh, issue because it's a hot political issue. Uh, I want to, uh, talk about it for a second. Um, I, I wanna commend our mission, our commissioners on their dedication and hard work to improve Spalding County. However, approving a commissioner pay raise now may strain our budget further, diverting resources from essential services like infrastructure and public safety. This decision could set a precedent for unsustainable future raises. We must evaluate each decision carefully to avoid long-term financial burdens. Additionally, many residents are struggling economically and we ask citizens to tighten their belt, belts and we must do the same. It is important to align elected official compensation with community expectation and financial capacity to maintain trust. I urge the board to reconsider the proposed commissioner pay raises and focus on addressing immediate needs responsibly. I wanna talk a little bit. I, I said a hard thing there to be able to do that. But the difference, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor has been on the board for approximately twenty years. I've been on the board for just a little while and our pay is almost exactly the same. There's something not quite right in that twenty years of longevity and trying to set it up this way. When you look at how our board commissioners are paid versus the rest of the, uh, one hundred and fifty-nine counties, we are way behind. The first thing we did, so everybody knows, is we looked at a model that, uh, DeKalb County had and it said that, uh, we should be paid, uh, over sixty thousand dollars. That's a whole lot of money from where we are right now. I started, uh, a few years ago and I was making fifteen thousand dollars in this job a year. Sixty thousand dollars is what the DeKalb people are making. When we looked around and we asked the county manager, find out about other counties that are around here. The average county salaries for commissioners is fifty-five thousand dollars. I'm now making twenty-seven thousand dollars to be able to do this. Something is not right. Our board is willing to take a stand and say, we're going to do the right thing, but we're gonna make sure that every citizen understands exactly what we're doing. If you didn't receive a pay raise from two thousand, that's two zero zero zero, like us, there's something not quite right with it. Now, I believe everybody should know that. I had people come up and say to me, hey, you signed up to do this for a specific price? That's exactly right. I did. I'm willing to stand up and say that. But if we're going to bring folks in to try to replace me, try to replace the other commissioners, there's gotta be some kind of, uh, balance on what it takes to be able to do it. I will tell you that, um, the money that I'm making today does not pay, uh, what I think is even close to, uh, minimum salary for people who are working. So, uh, I want everybody to understand what we're doing. There's not anything, uh, below the scenes. We're going to, uh, increase the pay we've got. And the last time we did it was in two thousand. All right, comments from the other commissioners?
This, this wasn't an arbitrary number. This was actually done by, via research.
Yes, sir. It was, uh, researched for a considerable amount of time.
All right.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else? All right, at this time, do I have a?
Do we have a motion yet?
You do have a motion and a.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of the first reading of the budget, please raise your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Thank you. Excuse me while I get my paper. All right, item three. Uh, consider certifying the fiscal year twenty twenty-six rollback rate in compliance with the twenty twenty-four Georgia House Bill five eighty-one and the twenty twenty-five Georgia House Bill ninety-two requirement. Uh, is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make to, make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six rollback rate in compliance with Georgia House Bill five eighty-one and House Bill, uh, Georgia House Bill ninety-two requirements for early reporting.
Do I have a second? I have a second. Is there a discussion you'd like to say, county manager, about this?
I've got a question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
With, with the, uh, the two-point, uh, nine-two-eight meals, if we don't go back to that full rollback, we still have to advertise and have the hearings just like we always do the tax increase.
That, that is correct. We are still required to have three public hearings at the time of millage rate.
The good news all the way around for everybody is from my perspective, we're reducing taxes. Not just reducing millage rate, we're reducing taxes. Now, it may not be very much this year, but the trend is the going in the direction that we think the citizens want. Okay, any other, any other comments?
No, sir.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item four. Uh, consider declaring three pieces of equipment for, from parks as surplus and returning the funds derived from the sale of parks to Parks and Public Works to offset the costs associated with replacement of equipment and vehicles. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, I, I plan on voting to approve this because I understand, uh, what's going on. But I do want us to have a policy that talks about how funding, how money goes back into the budget. Um, because I, as I mentioned earlier, I don't think that it's fair that we allow certain departments to be able to do it and not others.
Understood. You're square with that?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Item five, consider engineering proposal for creating a stormwater utility, phase one, policy review and roadmap. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. So all know, we covered this during the, uh, uh, I have a motion and a second, so all know we've covered this during the, uh, uh, workshop, uh, in some detail.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, who was the second?
I was, sir.
Thank you, Jane.
Alright, any more discussion?
Um, I just wanna say I'm really excited about this coming on. Um, we've got lots of dirt roads, we've got roads that we have the side, the little ditch on the side is covered in mud. And this is the beginning of us coming up the plan for how we will maintain this. So I'm really excited about it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I, I absolutely agree. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Consider approving the contract from Piedmont Paving for the INODIC grant. Do I have a motion to approve?
Uh, motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would love to find out who's doing the dirt roads in Pike County because I don't want them up here.
Alright.
I, I, I was driving down one the other day and it's that thick on a dirt road that I think they went through there. I could've went through there with my tractor and a box scrape and did what they did.
Alright, that, that's on the stormwater piece. This is for the grant for Ambus Park and for Volunteer Park. Piedmont Paving is just the name of the company.
Okay, I got you. I got you.
I already did that today too. I'm sorry.
We'll say that again next. Alright, anything else? Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I had a conversation with the chairperson and as I discussed earlier today, I think that is very important that when, when major changes happen to projects that we have allotted for, for grants, that is imperative for the directors and staff to make sure that we are in communications with them and that they absolutely, loudly do not bring us stuff to approve at the last minute.
Don't paint us into a corner.
That's all I got.
Alright. And the, there is a, there is a, uh, uh, way to, to bring us stuff even from the community. So if you want something or proclamation, there, there's a, there's a procedure for that. So we're not trying to single anybody out, we would hold our own people to the same standard, so.
Yes, thank you for that. Alright, anymore? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four, uh, all those opposed? One. Motion carries, thank you. Uh, item number seven, consider contract forty-two, construction replacement airport utility relocation, phase two, G dot. Once again, we took this and discussed this during the workshop. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Uh, item eight was, uh, amended out. Uh, old business, consider adoption of the second reading of the alcohol server ordinance. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve on second reading the alcohol server ordinance.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? This is a big deal. This changes the way we're doing business inside of Spalding County. Alright. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, well done, Stephanie. Consider approval of the second reading of the no parking on county road ordinance. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, with, um, with your permission, one of the things that, um, TJ Imberger and I talked about today is placing the signs, should you vote to approve this, placing the signs for no parking at all sixty-eight entrances of the county. That would preclude us from placing signs on every road.
Oh, that makes sense.
That will majorly reduce the amount of money it will take to sign all of these roads. So, um, we appreciate the opportunity for this discussion.
Which is why I changed that language from, um, shall to may from in the first place.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So everybody understands, we're talking about, uh, parking on the side of roads. It ruins our roads a lot of times and it is a safety hazard a lot of times. People drive up, just stop their car, get out of it, go, Pete, next person along at night, hit that car. We're not allowing that to happen. And in some cases, it turns into where a fire truck or an ambulance can't get through to be able to pick up somebody because they're parked on both sides of the road and the road's too small to be able to get through. So this is a big movement to be able to take care of a life and safety issue as far as I'm concerned. Alright, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five?
No.
Four. Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't see. Four, all those opposed? Thank you. Uh, alright, we're at the report, your report. Okay, next is the report of the county manager.
You go ahead. Go ahead. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to share a couple of things with our community this evening. The, uh, road resurfacing update for this year, which is year four of our T-SPOLOSP is moving alo, moving along quite well. Uh, you can see on the screen that we've got, uh, Parrish Street ninety-five percent, Valley Drive ninety-five percent, Irving fifty percent, uh, Eastbrook Avenue ninety-five percent, Buck Snort is at ninety percent. Um, I do wanna call to the attention of our Board of Commissioners and our community that Jackson Road is coming up for, uh, for repaving. This is not a resurface, this is a full repaving. So ER Snell has their full-depth reclamation crew scheduled. We've asked, uh, ER Snell to give us no less, no less than seven days notice so that we can respond and report out to our community that portions of Jackson Road will be closed, completely closed while they are doing this, uh, this upgrade for our road. They're going to take this road to a standard that, uh, that we desperately need, recognizing that this is a no-through truck road. Uh, trucks are still using it, but we need to make sure that that road is capable of, uh, of, of managing the, the traffic that's going across it. One of the things that I do wanna highlight is that ER Snell was asked to mill our roads in front of resurfacing. Uh, some of the roads that you see that we are at ninety and ninety-five percent, uh, complete, as they've milled the roads, uh, they've milled down only about three quarters of an inch and they are finding dirt. So these roads are just at their full life expectancy.
That's the paving in Pike County then, I'm telling you.
Um,
That's rough.
They are rebuilding the base on those areas that they have found and they're doing it at the, at the cost that we've asked them to do it. So, um, I, I wanna give ER Snell credit for the work that they're doing because they are working hard at managing our roads. Uh, if you've not been down to Buck Snort, it's made a tremendous difference on Buck Snort. You know, that's the area down by the, uh, the landfill. So there, there's a lot of traffic that comes out of the community south of us into Spalding County and that's gonna be a, a much improved area for them to come in. Also want to highlight the fact that, um, Saturday night, as was the case a week before, where, uh, we're having these, uh, these very small pop-up tornadoes and weather events come through our community. Um, just, we encourage our community to please download the In Spalding app or the Sheriff's Department's Nixol app. Uh, that's very important. In fact, I had a conversation at church yesterday, uh, uh, one of our dear neighbors, uh, asked specifically why the, uh, the tornado siren was not, she wasn't able to hear it. And looking at where she lives in respect to the, the siren, it, it's almost at its maximum distance from the siren. Uh, and I shared with her, and I wanna share with, with everyone here, the tornado sirens are not constructed for you to be in our modern-day homes that are very sound resistant to be heard. Please download the app because it makes all the difference in the world for the, the types of these small tornadoes that are popping up very quickly. Um, I, I was in attendance with the, the, the event that went on Saturday night here in town at the auditorium. And, uh, but I, I had to leave early to support and help our team as the small tornadoes were popping up. And they, they were just popping up all over, uh, Lake Horton coming into Spalding County, uh, just north of the county in Clayton County, we had another. Uh, over in Locust Grove, they had a very small one go across I, I seventy-five. Uh, just be weather aware, especially this time of year with, uh, changes in our communities' weather patterns. Uh, please download that app. That's all I have for you this evening, Mr. Chair.
Deputy County Manager?
Uh, yes, I just have one thing that I wanted to share with the community. Um, had a meeting today with code enforcement, our solid waste department and community development. And I'm happy to report that they are collaborating for bulky days, um, which will allow our residents to dispose of large items, which will be at designated collection centers starting in June. Um, as soon as they have all the details worked out, we will be providing more information via all of our social media and website. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Watts?
Yeah, well, me and Commissioner Dutton had a chance to participate in the National Day of Prayer. And, um, I wanna give kudos to Cindy Alexander. And I would love to see more stuff like that in our community. It was a great event, I mean, I love it, that's awesome.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Um, I'm, I'm still looking forward to the, the town hall meetings Ms. Sherrill's trying to get organized. Uh, just keep us updated on that and when they are and, uh, just get it out there for everybody to know where we at, so they can come chew on us a minute. Um, the, like, the, the little tornadoes, did y'all all get my little video of the sirens going?
Yes.
That was in Woolsey, I could hear it from Woolsey at my house, as loud as crap. So I guess we need to check, we'll see what kind of Woolsey's got since nobody ever hears ours.
Mr. Chairman, I, or, sorry, um, Mr. Commissioner, I, I think the wind was blowing in the right direction.
Okay, anything else, sir? Commissioner, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dutton?
Uh, yeah, we had a great time at the ACCG conference. Thank you for everybody, uh, for, for going down there and, um, putting it with my kids, 'cause I brought my kids this time. Um,
It was great.
Learned, learned a lot. Uh, congratulations to you on your.
Thank you, sir.
All the work you put in. Uh, I too had a great time in the National Day of Prayer. Um, but a lot of folks, I, I don't know if y'all knew that the city church and ten other churches put on, uh, an event here at the Parkin Six every year where they come out and publicly pray for all elected officials in the county. And, uh, there were a couple retired city officials there and, and me. Now, they're not calling us up on stage to pray for us or anything that.
Couple of Wednesdays ago.
Yeah, it was a couple of Wednesdays ago.
Make sure we, I know about it.
Yeah, I kinda learned about it at the last minute, I saw it on Facebook and went, well, if they're praying for me, I should probably be out there. Um, so it was, it was a great, uh, um, very diverse, uh, event. It really connected in all parts of the city. It was also the chance for them to award, uh, several thousand dollars to local food banks and shelters and stuff that they, that they have collected from, from their efforts. Um, I mean, there's a reason he got the volunteer of the year award, I mean, he's, it, just the incredible stuff that's happening downtown. Um, uh, that'll be it tonight, that'll be it tonight. I could go on, but I'm not, I don't want to.
We had a great opportunity for, uh, uh, the Secretary of Energy to come to Spalding County. We're talking about a little bitty county and the Secretary of Energy, the fifteenth most powerful person in the world because he's fifteenth in line to become the president, to come and go to Renai and look at that. One of the things that's important to me is, uh, the past regime, uh, presidency put out a law to close down basically Renai. Uh, once we found out about it, uh, you can say it's a politician's, whatever words you wanna use, got in gear to be able to, they closed it, they passed the law on the December twenty-sixth. We got in gear to be able to move it, got it to Congress, got the, that to pass, it was the tenth bill to pass, um, uh, with the new president and were able to save Renai from being there. The, uh, Consul General for Japan was there. It was a nice action, nice, uh, thing to be able to be done. First time in a hundred and eighty-four years we, that we've been around, that we had a, uh, cabinet-level member down here in Spalding County. Uh, County Manager, I'd like to, uh, ask that you put together a master plan for the jail and the courthouse. Doesn't have to be in the next year, I don't want it to be something we think we're gonna try to do in the next year or two. Uh, so it could be a five-year plan, but I wanna plan for what we're doing with the jail and the courthouse, uh, and bring it back to us.
Get, get with Judge Thacker on that, I think that there's already, I think that's already kind of in the works.
Pulling together, yes. Uh, but I wanna have a formal plan to be able to do that. Uh, Dr. Burke, I wanna thank, continue to thank you for what you're doing with, uh, Spalding U. That's a good thing. Uh, citizens are getting an idea of what we do and in some cases, uh, their eyes are rolling back, wow! And, uh, stop the fire hose, let me take a breath here, so thank you for what you're doing there. Uh, uh, we don't have a, a veto, line item veto. Uh, some places have a line item veto, uh, for the pre, uh, pay raise that I talked about. We don't have that. We move together as a board and, uh, so you all need to, to understand that. I wanna say thank you for, first, the board coming together and doing the stuff they had to do for the budget and then for, uh, the county manager and the deputy county manager pulling it all together. The books are, uh, lengthy and we have to go through them almost page by page to be able to see what's going on in that. So I truly appreciate that. Um, next, uh, so everybody knows and we've heard at least the chairman say it, we have a deadline when things are supposed to get to us. If you miss the deadline, you're not gonna get it in the, in the agenda. So let's make sure that everybody understands, there's a deadline to get stuff on the agenda. If you can't get it here, by that time, you're gonna have to wait. We can't bring things in at the last minute. We don't have time to sit and think and work through and ask questions to be able to do it. Uh, last item is, uh, thank you to the sheriff for all the stuff he's doing around our county that, uh, people don't understand, people don't see, but it is, uh, making us safer. It is still the board's number one issue for public safety. We've put the money behind it and we appreciate the way you're handling it and you're making it so that we get to be heroes all the time because of the work you do, so thank you for that. Alright, uh, anything from the attorney? Anything else from you, sir?
No, sir, thank you.
Uh, sure, Dr. Burke?
I was just asked, Spalding U graduation will be May the fif, May the fifteenth at the senior center. You all should be getting an invitation to come and just celebrate with this group. We started out with thirty-one and I think we are down to maybe twenty-nine.
Good.
Yeah, really.
Uh, uh, yep, alright, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. We're adjourned.